I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, April 1st, 2008. May we have the roll call for council?
Councilmembers Draymond?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Weaver?
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Najarian?
Here.
May we have the roll call for the housing authority? Authority members Draymond?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Brazian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Chairman Weaver? Vice Chairman C.
Here.
May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the April 1st, 2008, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, March 27th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. We'll read the first item.
Director of Community Development and Housing regarding use of CDBG administration funds in preparation for the 2008-2009 CDBG annual plan and city budget, wanting his council in motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Durant?
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, Vice Chairman C., members of the Glendale Housing Authority. Last November, we gave a report on the status of program planning for the fiscal year '08-'09 CDBG program, at which time the City Council approved a preliminary funding allocation plan by funding category, which included using 15% of the CDBG funds for social services, 20% for administration, and 85% for capital improvement projects. However, during the course of that discussion, the City Council requested additional information regarding the use of CDBG administration funds, which brings us to today's meeting, where we've tried to provide you with detailed information regarding what is entailed in administering the CDBG ESG and the Continuum of Care Supportive Housing Programs, programs for which CDBG administration funds are used. Also, we do plan to return next week to request final approval of the CDBG annual plan, so if the council were to provide different direction regarding the administration allocation, it can be incorporated into the final plan approval next week, as well as the city budget approval process. So, as we have been reporting, HUD allows communities to spend 20% of CDBG entitlement to administer the CDBG program, which ostensibly HUD determined from the very beginning was a reasonable allocation to ensure entitlement jurisdictions have the capacity to properly administer the CDBG funds. However, as it relates to Glendale, 20% of the entitlement is not only used for the CDBG program, but also to administer the $145,000 ESG program and the $2.1 million in the Continuum of Care Supportive Housing Program, which if you added all of those three programs together would equal $5,842,000. So, if we used a percentage of how much we spend against all three programs, that would equal 12.3% of the grant total used on administration. But again, the bottom line is it's 20% of the CDBG entitlement and only $40,000 of the Supportive Housing Program that we use for administration. I'd also like to point out that each of the three grants have very different sets of rules and regulations and federal financial management systems. And of the three programs, the Supportive Housing Program, or SHP, is actually the most onerous and tedious to administer. It's a program that requires a lot more involvement from HUD and a lot more restrictions in terms of administering the program and imposing requirements on our subrecipients. So, current administration budget is $718,000, $678,000 from the CDBG program, and $40,000 from the Emergency Shelter Grant Program. Under the Emergency Shelter Grant Program, while our entitlement is $2.1 million, we can only use 5% on administration. And then, we share that 5% equally with the nonprofits. So, we get 2.5%, and the nonprofits get the other 2.5%. And then, the actual administration allocation is based on the actual expenditures at the end of the year by nonprofit organizations. So, at this point, it's a guess limit, but it's around $40,000. And then, of that amount, of the $718,000, $527,000 is budgeted for salaries, $130,000 for benefits, and $59,000 for maintenance and operational expenses. Administration funds currently support 6.17 full-time equivalent positions, as reflected in Exhibit 1 of your report. Also, as mentioned in your report, we require two full-time staff just to administer the Continuum of Care Supportive Housing Program. And again, that program only funds $40,000, so it only pays for half of a position, while we need two just for that program. As we indicated in the report, the primary purpose of CDBG homeless program administration is to provide program management, oversight, and coordination to ensure that the programs are administered in compliance with the federal rules and regulations, that we meet all of the reporting programmatic and fiscal requirements of HUD. Each year, this involves working with agencies and city departments to implement 33 to 35 CDBG, ESG, and SHP social service programs, in addition to 12 to 15 new and ongoing capital improvement projects. And city social service and capital improvement projects do require administration, just like the nonprofit agencies do. And one of the biggest challenges that we have, one of the areas that we spend most of our time as program staff is working with the nonprofit organizations, providing them technical assistance because of limited capacity on their part to be able to comply with our program requirements. We spend a lot of time negotiating with the nonprofit organizations, giving them technical assistance, doing training, how to comply with the regulations, and that's where a lot of our effort goes. And again, as we detail in the report, our primary responsibilities include development and submission of the annual plan, as well as the five-year plan every five years, which we will begin next summer for the 2010-2015 five-year plan. And again, following all of HUD's requirements for community participation, transparency in the development process, and working closely and in partnership with the CDBG Advisory Committee. Annual plan itself is a 150-page planning document. So, for example, next week, when we submit the annual plan to you for your review and approval, you will just see probably four or five pages of the plan. But once we go back and prepare the plan and pack it for HUD, it's actually a 150-page document. We have to prepare HUD reports, such as the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report every year, which is an 80-page year-end evaluation report of the CDBG program and the accomplishments of all of our social service agencies. We also have to prepare individual annual performance reports for each of the 12 Supportive Housing Program projects separately. In addition, we have to prepare and submit regular disadvantaged business enterprise reports to HUD and labor compliance certifications and reports to HUD on all of our construction projects. Every year, we have to prepare the SHP grant application, which involves a separate needs assessment, RFP, and proposal evaluation process, training sessions with agencies, the Homeless Coalition, and members, and with HUD. So, Supportive Housing Program, we're required to do everything we do with CDBG, but it's a separate condensed process and requires a lot of staff effort. Our responsibilities are also coordination of CDBG and ESG social service programs, where we meet with community organizations and encourage collaborations, and meet with them to ensure non-duplication of services as they develop their programs. We will, of course, every year, we receive funding proposals, and we spend the entire month of December analyzing proposals and packaging proposals to prepare to submit to the advisory committee for their review and evaluation. We do project coordination with city departments, and examples of that was the Edison Pacific Project, the Adam Square revitalization, the Colorado revitalization, and now we're working on East Garfield Project. A lot of what we do is contract administration as it relates to social service agencies. Agencies apply for a certain funding amount. Typically, they don't get the amount that they apply for, so we have to go back and negotiate new budgets with those agencies, negotiate new service levels, their outcomes. We have to ensure that they develop outcomes that are measurable, that work. We have to develop budgets together with the agencies. We have to make sure that they understand the program eligibility requirements and that they have a system in place to be able to verify the eligibility of the persons they serve. We spend a lot of time processing invoices. In most cases, they are monthly invoices. In a couple of cases, these are weekly invoices. And we require a lot of documentation in order to reimburse the agencies, and we get a lot of complaints from the agencies. As it relates to capital improvement projects, again, because the agencies don't always get the full funding that they request, or do the departments, we have to renegotiate new scope of work. A lot of times, there are leveraged funding sources, so we have to be real clear on what's CDBG, what is not CDBG, what is eligible under CDBG and would not be eligible, so they could use the leveraged funding sources for the non-eligible construction items. We have to negotiate budgets, again, program eligibility. A lot of times, there are consultants involved, so we have to ensure that the agencies understand the procurement requirements for hiring consultants if we're using CDBG funds to pay for them. We have to do environmental review on each construction project. There are bidding documents, where we have to incorporate all the federal language as a federal assisted project. We have to review and approve bids. We have to submit contractors for approval to HUD, and we have to ensure disadvantaged business enterprise and labor compliance on all construction projects. Another big part of what we do is program monitoring. Every year, every agency and every city department is monitored by staff. We do a desk review. We do monitoring site visits. We interview the executive directors. We interview participants. We review the files on-site. We come back. We meet with the project managers, because project managers don't monitor their own projects. We're monitoring each other's projects. We come back. We meet on what was found during the visits. We draft letters. We rewrite the letters. We send the letters out. We need a response from the agency. We either clear them based on the response, or we send out another letter and we do follow-up until our concerns and findings are cleared. Then, we share this information with the advisory committee so that they are in the loop, and they use monitoring their concerns, monitoring it as one of the tools when they evaluate and recommend projects. We do financial monitoring. We review their financial management systems, make sure there are checks and balances, make sure the executive director has someone co-signing their vouchers, make sure they have policies and procedures in place, make sure that they have on file financial audits, which we'll be talking about next week. There's a recommendation to revise that policy. That's a big part of what we do. Of course, we staff the CDBG Advisory Committee, and we staff the Glendale Homeless Coalition. In summary, and I will conclude now and open it up for questions, but the major compliance issues that we have to be concerned about, and then that HUD is concerned about of us, are program eligibility and documentation, and working with the agencies to make sure that they're able to document that they do, in fact, serve primarily low-income families, that the agencies meet the service levels that they proposed, that they do what they said they were going to do, that the agencies accurately and reasonably articulate, measure, and meet their performance outcomes. Financial management is a big issue with HUD in how we verify the costs are eligible and that we get backup documentation in order to reimburse for funds, and that the use of the funds is proper and that the agencies stick to their budgets. And we're concerned about social service expenditure rates, because if a social service agency is not expending their funds, then we'd like to get those funds back up on the street, if you will, and recapture those funds, make a report to the advisory committee so that another agency could use those funds and they don't go to unspent. Now, for capital projects, again, our biggest challenge is the capacity on the part of the nonprofits to manage construction projects, that they haven't taken on more than they can handle. And again, to document program eligibility, the timeliness of implementing the projects, and following all of the federal guidelines such as procurement, labor compliance, and disadvantaged business enterprise. And again, we try to provide a lot of detail in the report to give you an idea of what we do on an ongoing basis and on a cyclical basis, and so I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. I think I was one of the people that had asked for this to come forward, because the sum of money did look like a rather large amount. And I appreciate you going through the long list of duties that's entailed in the administration. Is it typical to offer, I mean, these positions are treated as full-time city employees, so they accordingly receive the benefits and everything else that a regular employee would receive?
Correct.
Is that unusual in light of the funding coming from an outside source?
No. Well, I don't want to speak for the HR department, but the CDBG program, initially it was, for the first five or 10 years of the CDBG program, employees, actually for about the first 15 years, employees were non-classified, because technically, it was a year-to-year contract with HUD. But after 25 or 30 years, it's pretty much a stable part of the city organization and of this community, and so these are full-fledged, classified-salaried, full-time employees.
Mr. Quintero?
The grant recipients, especially those running the social service programs, what percentage of the money allocated to them is allocated for administration? 12%? 10%? Is there a cap on admin?
Uh, Councilmember Quintero, there is no guideline for administration. The main things that we pay for CDBG is staff and operational expenses. For example, we'll pay the salary of a case manager, or we'll pay part of the rent for their offices. But there is no particular cap or designation for administration. It's whatever they need, and on the merits of what they propose on a year-to-year basis, you know, weighing the merits of that with other proposals and the advisory committee, and it's pretty flexible.
Because in the Workforce Investment Act, I believe the cap is much lower than 20%. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I know it's much, much lower than 20%. In other words, the Department of Labor does not let the grantees use, I just don't remember what the percentage was, but there's actually a cap on what can be spent on admin as opposed to services and so forth.
That's correct. I do know one difference between CDBG and DOL, or the WIA program, is under WIA, you could charge city staff to programs, to a program line item. Under CDBG, we don't have that. For example, our entire MIS unit in WIA is charged to programs. If they're working in CDBG, they have to be charged to administration.
Questions? Mr. Yusefian?
Refresh my memory, how much of the 5.8 million is, 5.9 million is CDBG?
It's, I think, 3.3...
3.3 is CDBG. And how much is the CHP?
CHP is 2.1.
And ESG?
$145,000.
And how much do you spend on the $145,000?
How much do we spend?
Hmm?
On administration?
Hmm?
There's no allowance for administration under...
Okay, so zero for that?
Correct.
And for CHP, you have only 5% allowed?
Yes, which we share with the businesses.
Which is $40,000?
Yes.
Okay. So, for CDBG, which is $3.3 million, you're spending $678,000?
Correct.
Okay. But according to you, part of that $678,000 is you're taking part of that money and subsidizing the CHP?
CHP, correct.
Okay.
A significant part.
Okay. Now, out of this $3.3 million, $600,000 is for the nonprofit organizations?
$503,000.
Okay. And how much of the, and the rest of it, basically goes to the...
Capital projects.
Capital, how much of that, that capital project goes to the community, and how much of it is for city use?
In the current year, yeah, in the current year, $400,000 goes to the community, and I think 2.1 goes to the departments.
Okay. All right. So, basically, combined out of $3.3 million, you have about $1 million that goes to the community?
Combined.
Combined. And 2.1, or 2.3 goes to the city?
City.
Somehow, the math doesn't here, doesn't add up, because 600,000, 400,000, 2.1, it, you lose the 678,000 somewhere in here, because that's part of that 678,000 is part of this 3.3, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. The numbers need to be a little bit lower. Now, my question was, as I saw some of these individuals in here, I've had this issue before, is that you have 6.1, six people. Okay, let's not get in after the 1.7 person. Let's go six people. You have put down yours as .70, which means 70% of your time is taken by just the CDBG. Am I correct? So, 70% of your job is this. And then, you have all these people who basically do some of the other work, 2.7, administrative analysts. What does the administrative analyst do? We have almost two and a half, three people. What do they do?
Yes, Councilman Yusefian, they do the monitoring. They do the processing of invoices. They collect the backup. They go back and forth with the agencies to make corrections to the backup to the invoices the agencies submit to us. They do the program planning. They assist in conducting the public hearings, the community meetings we have to develop the plan. They, they do, my report. It mainly contract administration, monitoring, processing invoices, keeping track of the budgets, downloading PeopleSoft reports. They prepare the subrecipient agreements that we execute between the agencies and the city. They negotiate the service levels, the outcomes, the budgets. They provide technical assistance to the agencies. They do the proposal evaluations when they come in. Those are the main things they do.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because you have $600,000, and most of that money is being used by the city. So, you know, Public Works is using that money to do their curbs and gutters, or, you know, change pipes here and there in eligible areas, or whatever they're doing. So, they have their own administrative costs, too, on top of that. I mean, we're not, I don't think, I don't think these people are going out there, these three individuals, and telling Public Works how to administer their contracts, are they? Because if they are, somebody's wrong at the Public Works. They should know how to administer contracts. This is part of their job.
What the departments don't know is which federal requirements apply to the projects that are CDBG funded. For example, when they prepare bid specs, we have to get copies of the bid specs, and we have to incorporate the federal language that's specific to the CDBG program. For example, we have to add disadvantaged business enterprise requirements into the bid specs. We have to add labor compliance requirements into the bid specs. We have to attach the table of the wage rates that the contractors that are bidding on projects have to bid on, and those are updated once a month. So, we do have to review their bid specs. We do have to work with them in developing the engineer's estimate for their projects to make sure that, again, what CDBG is paying for is eligible, that they're performing work in the right census tract, a HUD/CDBG eligible census tract. And then, when bids come in, we have to review the bids, and we have to check to make sure that the contractors adequately completed all of the federal required forms in their bid package. And if they didn't, we need to disqualify them. So, we have to work very closely with the departments. When the departments want to hire a consultant, and they go out and give bids, again, we have to make sure that they procure consultants, you know, following the CDBG federal guidelines. And sometimes, departments actually get ahead of themselves, and they're as much, you know, trouble as nonprofits, but for a different reason, because they're so adept, and they forget that they have to follow the CDBG regulations as they begin to manage city projects.
Do you provide the same type of services to a nonprofit organization?
Sure do.
So, you go through...
Or, because they have more limited capacity. Some nonprofit organizations don't know how to get construction bids. They don't know how to publish notices in the newspaper. Once they receive them, they don't know what to look for to compare and contrast. So, we provide the nonprofits with a lot of technical assistance.
And...
Mr. Yusefian, let me just, you know, a follow-up question, but at the end of 25 years, you're telling me that Public Works or even Water &amp; Power just doesn't know how to work with the CDBG program? And I think there's something lacking in that department's administration.
Mr. Starbuck?
Well, Mr. Mayor, can we be clear? Has GWP applied for any projects under CDBG?
Not lately.
And what currently does Public Works have applications in for capital?
ADA curb ramps?
That's it?
Yeah. We're working with Public Works and Library and Labor Legal Services on the Adam Square Library construction...
The Adam Square Library, but I mean, in terms of, in terms of Public Works projects, they have supplemental money for ADA curb work.
Yes. And they're going to be using CDBG funds for the East Garfield LE improvements?
Right. That's part of the neighborhood improvement project.
They did Adams Hill, Adam Square...
Adam Square, Parks, and Public Works.
So, they've been using it. And Public Works has been, majority of the money in CDBG has gone into public improvements. It's basically, most of the money, I've been here eight years, and prior to that, I have watched this. Most of the money, actually, originally, it was all the money at one point, then the federal government changed their rules to allow that. It was done on purpose, so you just don't waste your money on things, to do some improvements in areas that are basically falling apart, so you could improve it. And that was the purpose for it. And I understand that. And the question goes back, is what, I don't care which department it is, it is a city department. This is something they've been doing for years. It's not something new. So, I just have a hard time believing we have people who we pay $100,000-plus in all those departments, okay? And we have to have people spend another $600,000 to basically hold their hand on how they do applications. I can't understand a nonprofit, they ain't getting paid. You know, most of these guys are just volunteers. They don't know. But, you know, curbs and gutters, we've been doing curb cuts and ADA in this city for as long as I've been in here. It's on the CDBG every year. If that city engineer, or his assistant, or whoever it is, doesn't know by now how to fill application, and you got to hold his hand, you know, we got, we got an issue. You know?
Yes.
Starbuck?
Councilman, anything to add?
I'll defer to Jeff.
Councilman Yusefian, there is one thing that's inherent in administration of the federal funds and CDBG program as it relates to capital improvement projects. There does need to be a separation of duties. For example, if we are the administrators and we're overseeing compliance of the CDBG program, we have to have a role in addition to the departments. We have to oversee the work that they do, whether they're doing it 100% correctly or not, or in regards to the level of technical assistance that we have to provide to the departments. We still need to have a separation of roles. For example, we couldn't just hand them the money, give them training, and let them go. I mean, HUD will not expect that of us. HUD expects us, as professional grant administrators, to be able to work with the departments to oversee the work, and together ensure that they're complying with all the applicable rules and regulations and processes.
If...
If, if, if we just say you're gonna get only 15%, what are you gonna do?
I, I'd have to reevaluate our staffing and our work plan. It's probably, I'd have to cut some things out. For example, currently, we monitor each program every year. I might have to go to once every two years. Or develop a system where only agencies that had findings will monitor every year and the others will do every two or three years. We may go to a, a two-year annual plan instead of an annual plan to, you know, to, to streamline that. I may have to eliminate a position.
But the world will not end, would it?
The world as we, the world as we know it will, but.
Like the ADA stuff, they've been doing it for so long. So, I mean, do you really need to evaluate the ADA thing every single year? You know?
We, we need to requalify it every year. Every year, we have to resubmit to HUD why it's an eligible project. We have to define the area. We have to tie it to the, the census data. We have to submit a, a new budget. Every, every year, we have to re-qualify these projects. And we have to submit them to HUD, HUD has to approve them.
And as somebody who has sat through those meetings with the HUD regional people who do the audits and sit down with Mr. Duran and require that I be there so they can review how well we're doing our job monitoring, they are not easy audits. The answer to your question, Mr. Sefian, is if, if this, if this council directs we work within 15%, we'll do that. But it won't be the same level of review and, and, and control that we do now. And it is a high level of review and control. And again, I've sat through those meetings with HUD following their audits and the HUD people are very strict on what they expect. And frankly, we have a very high reputation with HUD because of the way we do monitor and control our programs. And I've seen agencies that frankly don't exhibit this level of control, and this is one of the areas where an agency can get into big trouble, either through their contracting agencies like the service providers, when, when they lack the capability to do it and you don't have closer enough controls, or in other ways. I mean, the last audit I sat through, and the report was, we had an agency who was refusing to give them the information. And frankly, they had a position, but their position was dead wrong. And HUD looks to us to go back to them to make sure they comply.
But we can, we can deal with our own people. I mean, over $2 million of this money, which is two-thirds of this money, is our own people. It's our own city workers. And, and we have checks and balances in place, we have a finance department in place, we have, in, in, we have auditors, we have all kinds of auditing services in our own city. So they could handle part of that and they should be doing it right in the first place. But in my opinion, you know, nonprofits, I have no problem, you need to do that because this is an outside, you know, whether it's a consultant or whatever, outside of the city, it's one thing, but inside of the city, we have good people inside the city and I think there's a way to do some cost savings. And by saving even $100,000, that's $100,000 that we could spend on something that we really need. And some of those agencies who are going to, running to CDBG every five seconds, asking for 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, 500,000, you know what? They're gonna have to do what is required to, to qualify, to keep up with the stuff, you know? And that's where I'm coming from. I'm not saying that we don't have to do the work for the people who are outside of this organization, but we call ourselves a very professional organization. We have all kinds of checks and balances all over the place. And I do with though, because I know the individuals. There's a lot of checks and balances within the organization. So if there's all these checks and balances in the organization, why do we have to, it's like triple checking it to a point, I think bureaucracy gone wild.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is not bureaucracy gone wild.
Let me get, I'd like to, I was next.
Frank, go, Mr. Starbuck.
In terms of the social service agencies, the outside social service agencies, you keep talking about monitoring, but I assume the monitoring is a set series of check-offs that need to be done. They go to the site, onsite monitoring, they go to the site, they check off, they look to see, I mean, how long does that take? That takes a few hours. Then I assume it may take another hour or so to put that in a report form to either keep in the files or send to HUD. So you keep talking about outside monitoring, but I mean, it's just done with the same forms that the agencies have seen for years and the monitor has used for years. So that in itself doesn't strike me as being a particularly time-consuming or, or, you know, should it be an expensive situation for our, our employees. And the other thing is the fiscal monitoring, and that's basically looking at the, the books for the agency. And I mean, I just don't see the monitoring for the outside agencies. I don't see it as being that laborious a task.
If I could respond to that?
I know Mr. Starbuck wanted that.
Councilman Quintero or Mayor Nager, Councilman Quintero. The, yeah, the side visit itself is probably a two or three-hour meeting. Preceding the side visit is a desk review, reviewing all the correspondence that we've collected throughout the year, including invoices and how often we've had certain problems with the documentation to the invoices, refamiliarizing ourselves with the sub-reception agreement, with their quarterly reports and to what extent they're meeting their stated goals and their outcomes, to get a sense of, of what to expect when the analyst goes out there to conduct the monitoring. And then, every year, we have one or two, sometimes three, I think this year's gonna be three, at least recommended, new agencies where this is new to them. And so it's, it's, we have to, we have to spend more time with the new agencies. And it's not the same format every year. We part ourselves in, 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 in learning about what doesn't work and constantly improving and revising our forms or based on feedback we get from the agencies, revising that to make it better and, and more workable for us.
Pride yourself on generating new forms.
We're, we're bureaucrats, what can I say?
That's my case.
Well-intentioned, hey, well-intentioned.
Yes, well, well-intentioned and humane. And then we come back and we don't just, we don't just start writing things up. Like I said, the monitor is not the project manager. It's two different analysts because of the check and balance. So the, the monitor will have a meeting or two with the project, project manager to discuss what they found and to compare notes. You know, you're the project manager, are these the trends that you're seeing, does any of this surprise you, do you agree, whatever the case is? Then the monitor drafts a report, the report is submitted to me, I go through it, I massage it. Sometimes I, I go to get directions from Madeline if there's a lot of findings. And then we do a final report, we send the report out, they have 30 days to respond, they respond, and then we review it again to make sure that the response is adequate or it's not adequate. And half the time, it's not adequate, the first time, we have to send out another letter. And it, it just takes time. Or, or we find things that we don't, we don't feel we need to include in the report as fine or concern, so we spend some time to work with the agencies to have them correct, make corrections before we prepare the report so it doesn't have to get in the report. And sometimes we do that, and that, and that takes time and effort. And, and there's 33 agencies. And the SHP agencies are a lot more tedious than the CDBG.
Mr. Duran, let me, let me just interrupt you. I think, you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing from at least two of my colleagues is that we'd like to see some efforts made at getting some more efficiencies within the administration of these funds. And I don't want to sit here and put you on the spot and, you know, say, why this, why not that? But what I would suggest is that you come back to us with, with some types of efficiencies that, that can be generated within the administration. And every, clearly, every, what we're hearing from you is every efficiency will have a corresponding reduction in service or oversight or, or administration. And I think it would only be fair that, that we see those and weigh those, the, the efficiency versus the benefit that we're gonna forego so we can more aptly discuss those decisions, such as you said, if, if a particular nonprofit has a track record of clearly compliance, maybe they don't need to be administered every year. But to sit here and, I mean, we're kinda got you in the crossfire, I don't think we're really getting much, really fairness to you in this discussion, but I would like you to come back and show us what, what a corresponding reduction in administrative costs would, would mean in terms of decreased administration, oversight, compliance, et cetera. Is that a, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Is that where we'd like to go? We'd like to see what sort of efficiencies we can create.
Yes. And to an extent, I think off the bat, he, off top of his head, now I know why you've spent 70% outside, he's pretty fast on this. He's figured it out. I mean, he's, he's looked upon what are some of the savings that can be done. And so I'd like to see some of that. Come back, come back. I, I think we need to, in tough times, we need to figure out ways to make things even more efficient. And, and I'm pretty sure you're a capable man, you can come up and give us some options and say, okay, council, if housing agency, if you want us to bring it down to 15%, this is what will happen. If it's 10%, this is what will happen. If it's 5%, forget about getting a dime from the federal government because we can't do anything. So, but I need to see some options.
And I can assure you, we're not picking on you. Please stay tuned for the next budget session.
We love him.
Where we're gonna be going through, I would anticipate to every department and putting them to the same type of scrutiny to, to efficientize and really get.
There are words like that?
Efficientize.
Heat?
Such a word.
I don't know. I'm not that turny.
Make more efficient the operations. So you may be the first one up here and maybe take the heat, but it's not you, it's not your program, it's no comment on the level of work and productivity and quality of your staff, but it's just a sign of the times that we're gonna need to try and be as, as safe as possible in cost savings.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to add a, in that matrix, the, you know, the risks or the reduction in quality.
Absolutely. That, I mean, we need to see the costs and the, and the benefits.
Very high-quality program, and I'll give you two examples. Where we would have been in trouble if we did not have our current capacity. In fact, we had more capacity, we've reduced two positions since then. I don't know if you remember, but we had that inspector general audit for the, the, one of our homeless service providers, Institute for Urban Research and Development. And when the inspector general did the report, they, the, the organization could not produce the documentation that the inspector general needed to address the findings. Fortunately, we were able to do that. Edet spent probably 100 spend of her time for two months reconstructing all of the backup documentation that the inspector general needed, and we have since then cleared those findings. They also could not produce the, the match, the dollar-for-dollar match documentation that was part of the program. But we, we had those records because we require them and they were neatly organized. We were able to provide, to provide that information to the inspector general. We were able to clear the findings. The agency would not have had any way to address those findings and without our current capacity, we would have been in trouble.
And I'll note, we would be, we would be held responsible for those funds even though they were expended by the contractor.
Well, but my question there is, if we were sending monitors out on a regular basis, how come it took the inspector general to find out that there was a problem?
Because we can only drill down to, to a certain level, which isn't ever quite the same level as auditors would. You know, for example, Bill Fox would drill a lot deeper than, than we're capable of doing unless, unless we are forced to.
Don't we have a financial audit? Don't these agencies have to do a financial audit in addition to the program?
They do.
But that's only as good as the records they're giving, and that wouldn't necessarily, that's as good as the records they're giving an auditor. But if the inspector general drills down and wants to see source documents and they can't provide them to back out, to back up the bigger numbers, then they say, oops, hold it. And that was the sort of source documents that they were having difficulty with.
And, Mr. Mayor, the second example I'd like to give you also relates to the Institute for Urban Research and Development, who before PATH used to be our, our primary lead homeless service provider. And I don't know if, if you remember, if you were on council, but they withdrew from operating programs in the city in the middle of the year. And so we, our department, had to take over operating $1.6 million worth of programs, including the, the access center and the emergency shelter and some transitional housing programs. And so our homeless coordinator at the time, that was her full-time job for about six months. We, we wouldn't have that capacity right now. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have the capacity if we had to make reductions to work with PATH to implement the first-step housing program. Because that's gonna take a lot of our time and effort in coordinating that project with them and helping them find a property, getting the project transferred from one service provider to another and working with, with HUD and, and the grant application and revising documents and, and working with, you know, the sellers of property or the Verdugo Housing Corporation.
I understand, Mr., I understand, Mr. Duran. I mean, I mean, we're not saying you guys are burning money. We're not saying you're in any way negligent in your duties, but I think we'd like to see some ideas as to how we can trim the administrative costs.
And, Mr. Mayor, to an extent, as he's explaining some of these things, there is a certain amount of money being transferred from certain use to another use. I mean, some of these things are CHP monies. They're, they're, you know, they're, they're for housing for homeless and so on and so forth. And the federal government has very strict guidelines, it's 5%. That's all you could use. And in order for these people to be able to do some of these things, they're actually taking money, they're funneling it from CDBG into this account. So, and those are the things that I am not very happy about because if PATH had an issue or the person, I, I know the company that took off, but nevertheless, while we are in charge of doing that, guess what? We charge them out of that account. It did not come out of the housing authority money. You charge that account to run the facility, correct? Okay. So, and that's my point. I mean, if you didn't have the person, you would go hire somebody to do the thing. I don't really have to have somebody sitting there in reserve just in case. So what I'm, I'm gonna cut it short, that's gonna be my last thing. Basically, this is not, we are not in here beating you up as our mayor said. All I want to know, come back with possible savings and give us the good, the bad, and the ugly.
Thank you. I have a speaker, Mr. Masiehi, on this topic. Okay. Okay, I don't have any speaker cards on this particular joint meeting unless I've overlooked them. Therefore, that is our motion, giving direction. We need to get motion form.
You do actually have a motion before you, but certainly consensus is fine. I don't think a formal motion is necessary. We have the gist of what you want at this point.
Okay, thank you. And?
Move adjourned.
That's the last item.
Is it the last item?
Yes.
Move for council? Move, move for council.
Second.
Council's adjourned.
Move for the housing authority.
Second.
Housing is adjourned.